Today is October fifteenth, 2024, 6:00 PM. I would like to call the regular planning commission meeting to order. May I have a roll, please?
Mr. Howard?
Here.
Mr. Stapleton?
Here.
Mr. Rodehaver?
Yes, here.
Is everyone read over the minutes from the last meeting, please? Any changes or anything?
No.
So approved. Commission has copies of the August twenty, 2024 planning commission meeting minutes. No corrections were made, sorry. Went over that already, didn't we? New business, TA dash zero one dash twenty twenty-four presentation. Martina, you're giving the presentation, take it.
So I know in the packet for the planning commission, there is a memorandum that was prepared for you by myself and the city planner with respect to adult use cannabis. And so I'm not going to go into that in specific detail or get it highlighted because I'm sure you probably already had a chance to review that. As a little bit of background, in May of 2016, the Ohio Legislature adopted, or should be adopted legislation which legalized medical marijuana. So that basically the gist of that system is if you were able to go to one of the approved doctors and they found that you did have a medical condition, a specific medical condition, on the list of approved medical conditions, reducing medical marijuana, then you could basically buy medical marijuana. That came into effect in September of 2016 and was codified in Chapter thirty-seven ninety-six of the Highway Price Code. Part of that, Chapter thirty-seven ninety-six, did allow municipalities and townships, if they so choose, to either restrict or to completely prohibit cultivators, processors, or retail dispensaries of medical marijuana within the jurisdiction. At that point in time, what a lot of the cities and townships know how I did was they adopted a moratorium upon accepting applications for those types of businesses so they could look at it. As a result of that, on August fifteenth of 2017, the Moraine Planning Commission called a public meeting. And at the end of that meeting, the planning commission recommended to city council that we are one of businesses being prohibited within the city of Moraine. On September twenty-eighth of 2017, the city council conducted its public hearing as it was required to, since that was going to involve amending the zoning code. And then on October twenty-sixth of 2017, council conducted the second reading of ordinance number nineteen eighty-four dash seventeen, which I believe is included in the packet, which prohibited medical marijuana within the city of Moraine. And that medical marijuana remains prohibited today. So that's just a basic nutshell of how we sort of started down the road to adult use marijuana. So then in November seventh of 2023, as I'm sure you probably remember, issue two was on the ballot in the general election. Issue two was to allow the legalization of adult use cannabis, which is also known as recreational cannabis. Adult use is just a term that the ORC uses, but it's essentially recreational use. And that is, that was a ballot on November seventh of last year. Voters in Ohio voted to approve that, I believe it was about fifty-seven percent, if I remember correctly. Then thereafter, the Ohio Division of Cannabis Control started preparing, getting rules ready to basically regulate the adult use cannabis. And then they started issuing the licenses, I believe, this summer. And if I remember correctly, the licenses they initially started issuing were the quote-unquote ten B licenses, which were basically if you already had a medical marijuana, let's say processor, cultivator, or dispenser license, then you could sort of get this ten B dual-purpose license and already, since you're already established as a medical provider, then you could also get the adult use. So that there are some of those floating around here, whether they're able to sell on medical and adult use right now if they had that ten B dual license, that was the purpose of that. So after issue two was approved, again, and Moraine did what a lot of other cities and townships know how they did, parking back to medical marijuana. When it became legal, they adopted moratoriums in order to sort of put a pause and say, okay, let's look at this and review it. Because again, similar to the medical marijuana statute, the adult use cannabis statute does contain the same language about municipalities, cities, townships can, if they want to restrict or prohibit the adult use within their jurisdictions. The only caveat to that being is the adult use does provide for home grow. So even if the city were eventually to adopt legislation amending the zoning code to prohibit adult use or recreational marijuana, individuals would still be allowed to grow, I believe, up to six plants in their home per individual who is old enough to consume. So you have to be at least twenty-one for the adult use. So let's say you had two individuals living in your house who were twenty-one or older, then you could have, there's a cap of twelve a price. So even though you could prohibit the business side of it within the city, that would not stop the home grow, which would still be prohibited. Excuse me. So, and speaking with Mr. Soros, what we did was we drafted of, and I believe that's included in the packet as well, he proposed amendments to prohibit adult use cannabis. It would continue to prohibit the medical marijuana. It would also basically limit what is provided such that it would apply not only to medical marijuana, but adult use would be prohibited as well within the city. Have more reasons that we did this with basically to our thinking and from a legal perspective as well, as well, it doesn't really make logical sense to me to prohibit them but allow recreation. That seems a little inconsistent in my mind. Additionally, first of all, the federal law, marijuana is still illegal possession and trafficking is still legal under federal law. So with those things in mind, that's why we drafted and proposed zoning ordinance the way we did. Moraine City Council did, as I mentioned, adopt a moratorium so that this could be brought to the planning commission for recognition. That moratorium is ineffective until September of last year, but we did not want to wait until the last minute to put this through, since it's been already one year since November seventh of twenty-three, since basically issue two was adopted.
I have questions.
You mean?
You just stated September of last year. Is it September of last year?
September of next year, I'm sorry.
Next year, okay. I just wanted to clarify.
I'm sorry, yeah. They adopted another moratorium. They initially had about six or nine months to the first moratorium. And we were sort of waiting for the Ohio Division of Cannabis to get their rules together. After a while, I think they were cured once, not the votes, Paul. So at the twenty twenty-four council meeting, we went ahead and ultimately adopted a moratorium stating it for September of this year through September of next year of 2025. To give us plenty of time to get this to the planning commission so that you could look at it and make a recommendation back to council. I also wanted to, so that sort of wraps up my portion of that presentation. I know Mr. Soros received an email today from Chief Richardson with his opinion on allowing adult use marijuana within the city. So I was going to ask Mr. Soros to read that to the director so that we just have that and we can have that information.
One point of correction on your staff recommendation. It is actually no longer a Schedule I controlled substance, is a Schedule III controlled substance now?
Yeah, I heard it was, they were considering that, and I think that happened.
It did pass.
Yeah, and I already.
No.
I think they dropped it down.
It did.
I'm sorry.
Recognize that it has medical uses and decriminalized it federally.
Yeah.
Question on use definition. Can we get a little bit more clarification on use, medical marijuana use in the city of Moraine? I mean, so you're just, so this is just covering the cultivation and the sales through dispensaries, correct?
So what the medical marijuana did was you could give cultivation, processing, and dispensaries.
But not the actual use of?
No, I mean, if you're using medical marijuana and you have license, yeah. This is basically the business aspect of it.
Right. And the same as what they technically say is that adult use, it's, since it has passed, is it still illegal for recreational use? Playing the devil's advocate here.
Yeah, I mean, adult use is legal as long as you satisfy you're over twenty-one and you satisfy all the requirements you buy, you know, you can only buy a certain amount.
Right.
So again, what we're talking about with adult use is the same thing with medical marijuana. If it's available to go into effect in the city with respect to adult use, it would just be the business aspect of it. So you wouldn't have business cultivators, processors, or dispensaries.
Right.
Plus, like I said, you can still do home grow, so you can still use it, you know? So, and I mean, theoretically, you could, you know, go to date and buy it and use it at home. You just wouldn't be buying it at home. So I just hope that is the point.
Yes. Yes, because it was kind of, it was a little vague when you were talking about use.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, because they use the term adult use, that's the phrase, it's used in the ORC. Going on, I think I didn't really clear the terms of recreational use or use, but they raised it as adult use, adult use cannabis.
Other questions? Mr. Soros, you have a presentation as well, sir? Thank you, Ms. Dillon.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Dillon, for your presentation and everything. So my presentation's based off the technical review committee, which consists of city manager Mike Davis, myself, Nick Suri, city planner, Doug Hatcher, fire inspector, Lauren Alvarado, city engineer, Brent Carpenter, building and zoning administrator, and Beth Waters, permit secretary. So our staff report for this indicates that proper legal notices were presented throughout the city facilities, Dayton Daily News, and the city of Moraine website per Moraine Charter seven point one, and Moraine Codified Ordnances eleven twenty-seven. The technical review committee does not have any objections to the proposed staff report presented by law director Martina Dillon. As medical marijuana facilities are not permitted within the city limits, this would follow in line with the complete prohibition of marijuana facilities, sales, cultivation, and any sort of permitting throughout all city zoning districts. With the city of Moraine being heavily industrial, we also look at issues of employers and drug use here in the city, especially those that work with heavy machinery, heavy machinery and the use with CDL drivers, especially in the city. And as an additional note, just going back off what Martina mentioned earlier, per the ORC, you are still permitted to grow up to six plants per person, per residence, where two adult users reside with a cap of twelve. And that's ORC three seven eight oh point two nine home grow rule. And then we did have a report from our police chief, Craig Richardson, I wanted to read to you as well, before we get into any other questions or anything like that. So Chief Richardson did say that he is opposed to the sale of marijuana dispensaries and sales within the city limits of Moraine. Simply using historical public safety related statistics from states that have passed recreational use laws, there has been an increased use of marijuana that leads to increased contacts with law enforcement and criminal justice system, which is further taxing criminal justice resources. Legalization of marijuana sales does not decrease related violent crime or organized crime. On the contrary, a new organized criminal enterprise has sprung up under cutting legal marijuana prices and circumventing regulation and taxing. Recreational use of marijuana has led to an increase of emergency room visits, a thirty percent increase, and hospitalizations, a two hundred percent increase. Increased access to legal marijuana has led to a five hundred percent increase in accidental overdoses of children ages nine and younger, and has led to substantial increase of adult emergency room visits for anxiety attacks or psychotic-like symptoms from eating sweets infused with more marijuana than they were expecting. Marijuana intoxication traffic deaths rose sixty-two percent in some of these areas. From a public safety standpoint, I believe he did state that a permanent ban on marijuana dispensaries would be very beneficial for the Moraine community. There are any questions or any additional comments, we'd be more than glad to help answer or discuss. Thank you.
Do we have a source for any of the statistics that are stated in there, or is it just?
That's based off Chief Richardson's, from what he gathers through his police data and from local jurisdictions throughout the state. He does travel and meet with other police chiefs and such, so that's where a lot of his data does come from.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that there's nobody in the gallery to, I'm wondering why we can't hear from the community a little bit more. I understand that there's been a lot of research done on this. There was an overwhelming vote, and again, I'm playing the devil's advocate.
Yeah, I totally understand.
I have to look at both sides.
Right.
There was an overwhelming response to vote yes for recreational use. I would like to hear more from the community. So the community should have a lot of say-so in this as well.
Right.
Even as a planning commission, we are servants of our community, just like you're servants of the community as well. It's a, it's, this thing is a catch-22, and it could be, be a powder keg, because there's going to be a lot of opposition, there's going to be a lot of pros to it. I, I would like to see a little bit more data and feedback before we make a decision.
Now, Mr. Rodehaver, are you referring to like a, having a, like if the citizens were to vote or something like that on it, or have some sort of advertisement that would notify them directly?
Well, here's the thing, we're sitting, living in the city of Moraine, and you're going to get an overwhelming response to have a thousand dispensaries in the city of Moraine.
Right.
Just so it's convenient for those that do use. I've lived here most of my life, I know. It's not a secret. What? I know that the crimes are going to continue, and I know they've risen because of all this. This recreational thing is, I personally don't agree with it. Medical, yes. Recreational, no. But that's just one man's opinion.
Right.
Martina, you have something?
Yeah, if you want to.
I guess too, Martina, while I have you over here, with us following the proper procedures based off of the city charter and the Moraine Codified Ordnances of notice, technically we are not violating any sort of law or anything in this case. This is the proper text amendment procedure, and everything to move forward was such an amendment to be proposed to planning commission.
Yeah, as long as you made the notice.
Yep.
The notice was given, however, it was not clearly advertised, this is what it was about.
Take a look at it.
I, do you think? There's, there's no questioning in the law and what the law states. Law is very clear.
Just know that there's empty seats.
Prohibitive cultivation.
Law is very clear, and they're there for a reason.
Well, just add on to that, I did, I did put in the legal notice that the agenda for this planning commission case is to amend the Moraine Codified Ordnances to prohibit the cultivation, processing, testing, and retail dispensing of marijuana for the purpose of adult use in all zoning districts of the city of Moraine. And that's what's in your packet, that's on page five. So that's what went to the Dayton Daily News, city website, and the.
I think they were referring to the actual agenda. I think they were referring to the actual agenda of the.
Yes, actually, attending the meeting to voice their opinion on.
Like the main page of the agenda, that's what you're referring to?
Yeah, on the, on the page, yeah, on the agenda.
Okay. I mean, do you have anything else to add to that, Martina?
I was just going to follow up on what I handed Mr. Rodehaver and the other members. So basically what I did was I pulled the election results from the November election from last year, and, because I wanted to see how Moraine, what the Moraine votes were specifically, and so I tallied it up there, and I believe my, I double-checked my figures a couple of times, times, and it looks like the vote for yes on issue two was one thousand and two, or excuse me, one thousand and twelve, and the vote no was four ninety-seven. So I think, I just wanted to provide that information because I think that goes to what Mr. Rodehaver was saying as to getting some kind of information. I'm not saying you couldn't put something on the website and seek feedback from citizens and see if you get some kind of feedback that way. I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with that at all, if you want additional information, to see if you can get some feedback. I, you know, I'm sure Mr. Soros could work to do that, or if there's some other way. I mean, town halls, you could have a town hall and see if anybody shows up to voice their opinion about it, but I at least wanted to provide this information that I did pull off the Montgomery County Board of Elections website.
And, and thank you for that.
Sure.
Yeah, the question is not the legality of this or, or anything of that sort, I just think that there needs to be a little bit more feedback.
From the citizens.
From the citizens, I do. I'm not trying to be difficult, I promise.
No, I, yeah, like I said, that's why I wanted to mention, or one of the reasons I wanted to mention, there's a, the moratorium is until September of next year.
Correct.
So it's not like there's a specific time crunch.
Right.
We just didn't want to wait until the last minute to bring this to you.
Right.
And so now, you know, if you want to see if you can get more feedback, then we've got plenty of time to do that, rather than rushing through with something. I, that's, I have no objection to that at all.
Gentlemen? Gentlemen?
Yeah, we could just table it, vote to table it, and then we could get some feedback and then bring it back at a later date.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until such time that the community has voiced their opinion on this matter.
Second to that.
Would you like, would you like us to, to work on perhaps getting something on the website or?
Social media?
A town hall or something? I'm just trying to figure out.
Our Facebook page?
Facebook.
Moraine Facebook page? Media?
I would like to see more of a town meeting.
Okay.
Just get the feedback, whether it be right, wrong, or indifferent.
Yeah, no, I see, yeah.
You know, it's.
To help guide you make your decision, you'd like to see if there's some citizens that would like to give their input one way or the other, is what it sounds like.
My opinion, and gentlemen sitting with me, Kevin and Caleb, they have their opinion. I would like to hear more opinion from the people.
Yep.
It, it makes better sense to me to hear from the voters than to just make a decision for the voters.
Yep. Yeah, because the, I mean, I gave you the numbers, the vote tells you how they voted, it doesn't really tell you why they voted the way they voted. So I think that's, it sounds like to me, that's what you're trying to figure out.
Yep.
Without putting words in your mouth.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, again, you know, my, my opinion is mine.
[laughing].
And we all know what, they say about opinions, but we won't go there. But, yeah, I just think that I would have a clear conscience.
If you have more information.
Prior to voting.
Yep.
Or pass it through, and then they get the community backlash.
And then you get, yeah, you hear from people, why did you do that? You know, why didn't we have a chance to?
Overruled.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't want to overwhelm the city manager's office and, and/or Mr. Soros's office, or, or your office, Brent.
Yeah, part of our job.
Well, you know, if we can divert a disaster, that'd be great.
So.
Yes, Mr.?
Chairman Rodehaver, I just wanted to mention that I think.
Could you please come up for, for record, please, sir? Thank you, Mr. Davis.
You're welcome. I would add, I think the direction would be a community meeting, as you alluded to, possibly not social media. I think it would be a very significant challenge to be able to determine who was a Moraine resident, who wasn't, if those are the voices that you're wanting to hear. If it's through social media, that could present some challenges for IT and others in being able to determine.
To clarify, I simply meant that the meeting was posted on social media.
Oh, yes, okay, absolutely.
So that people would be notified about it, not that.
Yeah, that's, that, I mean, that sounds great. I just wanted to make sure we weren't leading down a, a direction where we'd be seeking survey responses or something through a social media or some other platform. I think an in-person meeting where folks could come in and share and, and learn and understand, and maybe even really clarify some of the answers that you had, which is, this isn't necessarily use, it's the cultivation and sell of it as well. And I think that, that clarification would go a long way.
Great.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Wow, one quick thing.
Yes, sir.
So I guess, so I guess with getting this out, I work for you, what would be a good, you know, timeframe you, you would want to look at for, you know, residents to be notified up until we would have another meeting for this specific item?
As long as the, as long as it's advertised and possibly get a response. I know on Facebook, you can put a little survey, yes, I'll attend, no, I won't. You can invite, you know, people. I don't know, I don't want to overwhelm our IT department, I don't either. But a month, maybe.
Okay. And if there was a post like that, it, it would be my phone number and email, and we've done that before for things, so that is no issue at all. I have, I'm very comfortable with people reaching out to me about information for this specific meeting and such, or someone would like to leave comments or anything like that. That's what we do with BZA and planning commission both, so I have no problem, you know, if I need to take down those comments or anything like that from people as well, so.
I was going to say, if you had put it, like we were saying, put it on the, the Moraine page on Facebook, I think you should be able to turn off the comments where you can't have all of that riffraff on there.
Yeah.
And just give them the opportunity to show up or not show up.
Yeah, and a lot of times those posts do get shared with the community page as well that I'm sure you're all on as well, so. That, I know that definitely helps get the word out as well, and people will be able to know about it. But we could, depending upon your situation of tabling this, we can certainly get this for next month or, if that works with you, if we were to go ahead and get a post out immediately, so.
That's quarterly now. That's quarterly now? Yeah, it's quarterly.
Quarterly.
Yeah, because we, we just have to give, for anything planning commission, we just have to give a ten-day notice, but for something like this and our discussion here, we can get something out, you know, obviously as soon as this week or next week, to where there's enough time for them to see it and word gets out and everything, and for citizens to be able to give their input and everything. So that is something that you're comfortable with, I can get to work on that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we need to hear valid, I'll use that word, valid arguments.
Okay.
On this, this, like I said, there's, there's way too much involved in this that just can't make a decision right now.
Right, totally understand.
Mr. Carpenter, do you, what, what is your, I'd like to hear from you, sir?
All right.
If I may?
Sure.
On this issue? On this issue?
I agree with you guys wholeheartedly. We need to have a lot more of the input from the citizens. So I agree with the planning commission.
Thanks, sir. We currently have a motion on the table for, to table this issue to an undetermined date in the future. We have a motion and a second. Let me have a roll, please.
Mr. Stapleton? Mr. Howard? Mr. Rodehaver?
Mr. Soros, is there any other business, sir?
I do not know, so thank you.
Planning Commission is hereby adjourned at 6:31 PM, Tuesday, October 15th, 2024.